Oh, no, you got one of those screens that don't let me cheat. It wouldn't do that anyway to you, so.
It is warm up here. It is. It's warm. You freeze as I'm still stairs and then you.
Exactly. Those are all your system, I like.
Right.
You want to share?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the law, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Here.
Councilmember Litzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean is absent.
Thank you. We will now move into presentations, and tonight we get to have the Human Rights Commission introduce their winners of their essay contest, and I want to thank the commission that's here. I just learned tonight that they read ninety-eight submissions.
That's right.
So. So, David, go ahead.
I was just telling her that we have really good engagement from the high school and Ursulin, and we're really thankful for the amount of support we get and for all the submissions we receive. As you know, my name is David Hartung, and I'm the Chair of the Kirkwood Human Rights Commission, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to recognize our winners. Each year, the Human Rights Commission sponsors an essay contest for eleventh graders that reside within the Kirkwood School District or attend Kirkwood High School or the schools in our district. We believe it's important to encourage young people to think critically about the world around them and to engage with issues that affect their communities and beyond. And this year, we asked students to address the question, what is the most important human rights issue currently and why? We received thoughtful and compelling submissions that demonstrated remarkable insight into complex human rights issues, and we were very impressed by not just the volume, but by the quality of those submissions. The quality of writing and depth of critical thinking from these young students was truly impressive, and it's clear that our students are paying attention to what's happening in the world and are capable of thoughtful analysis. These students represent the best of our community, young people who are thinking critically about important issues and expressing themselves with clarity and conviction, and their essays give us hope for the future and remind us why investing in our youth is so important. I'd also like to thank the teachers and educators who encourage their students to participate and help foster this kind of thoughtful engagement with important social issues, and I'd like to invite each winner to come forward as I call their name to receive their certificate. In first place, we have Alec Gates. Second place, we have Grace Holland. And third place, we have Drew Musman Young. And in fourth place, we have a tie with Emerson Sailor and Kylie Cole. And if we could, could we actually have the winners come up and we'll do a quick photo together? Mayor Gibbons, would you like to come down?
You're gonna hold us up, yeah, I guess.
You.
Thank you.
We will now move into public hearings. At this time, the council will recess to conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a special use permit amendment for an accessory dwelling unit in a detached structure at thirteen nineteen Forest Avenue. Ms. Graves, do you wish to enter exhibits into the record?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I'd like to ask that the following exhibits be entered into the record. Exhibit one is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the St. Louis County on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit two is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit three is a list of property owners whom notice of the public hearing was sent to. Exhibit four is a viewer map showing the list of property owners to whom notice was sent, of the public hearing was sent to. Exhibit five is a memorandum from Planning and Zoning Services Director Jonathan Raish to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit six is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty-five, dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and exhibit seven is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Wedler, who will present the issue to the City Council?
That'd be City Planner Two, Amy Lowery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I just wanted to make a correction to the agenda. This is a new special use permit. It is not an amendment, so that's, I think, just a typo on the agenda.
Okay.
The property is located south of the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks east of Guyer in the R-one zoning district, and it's addressed as thirteen nineteen Forest Avenue. So there's just an overhead view of the property. And then just photos of the front of the house and then the rear of the house, and there is an attached side entry three-car garage, so you don't see it in these photos, but it's right here. And this is an existing condition survey, which does confirm that the lot is one acre, so it meets the minimum size requirement for an accessory dwelling unit, which is just fifteen thousand square feet. And this is where they plan to place the accessory dwelling unit, which meets the twenty-five-foot side yard setback in the R-one district, and it also meets the fifty-foot rear yard setback. And the structure will be located behind the front line of the principal structure. This is just a proposed floor plan. They're planning on seven hundred and twenty square feet, and that's below the maximum of seven hundred and fifty square feet, which is allowed in an ADU, and they are planning for one bedroom and a kitchen area. And these are some elevations, but the design of the accessory dwelling unit will be reviewed by the Architecture Review Board. But it does show that the structure height is less than the principal structure height. The house is about thirty-four feet in height, and this will be twenty-three feet, I think, seven inches, which is below the twenty-four feet for an accessory structure. And it does meet the maximum two-story is what you can have for an accessory structure. So there are a number of guidelines that are review criteria that should be looked at for a special use permit. I'll just cite a few of these. Number one, the special use permit is established as an allowed special use in the applicable zoning district, which it is. Number two, the proposed use and design are consistent with the general purposes of this code. Number seven, the proposed use will be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such change shall not change the essential character of the same area. And as I said, there's a number of special use permit criteria, and I'll just cite one more. Number eleven, the proposed use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improve, an improvement of the surrounding property for use as permitted in the district. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend that this application be approved with the following conditions: that MSD review be sought if it was applicable. If not, then our stormwater ordinances will take over, and that ARB review of the design would be required. And I'm available for any questions. The applicant is here as well, if you have any.
Does the applicant want to go ahead and say anything at this time, or?
Only just a little.
Okay, but you're bringing up a lot of papers.
I'm Charles Bell. I'm the architect. But with me are the owners, Dr. Robert and Kim Abbott, and Kim's mother, Pat Boyle. We're delighted. This is an ideal site, and it fits the intention of the Kirkwoods' envisioned comprehensive plan. So with that, I would like to suggest, if you've got questions, there are four of us to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll go to council. Are there questions? Yes, Councilmember Litzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my question might go to Amy. I was just wondering, during the planning and zoning review, did you have citizens come in with comments, observations, pro or con about?
No, there were no comments.
And no emails or?
No, we didn't receive any emails on it.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was my main.
All right. Any other, yes, Councilmember?
Amy, any other ancillary structure?
No, there are no other accessory structures on the lot, so this would be the only one. Except for, I mean, they have a deck and a spa, but we wouldn't count that.
Those don't count into the fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Reiniker?
I just think this is a great use of the ADU. It's, you know, it was intended for this, and it meets all the requirements, so I think it's a perfect application.
Right. Good, thank you. I'll move to, are there any public comment? Anyone may make a public comment on this?
Mayor and Council, there are no public comments for this hearing.
Thank you, Jessica. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none further. This public hearing is now closed, and the bill will be on the June eighteenth council meeting agenda for first reading consideration.
You.
Thank you. All right. At this time, the council is going to recess once again and to conduct a public hearing. This is a request for a zoning code text amendment, section twenty-five forty-six G, floor area ratio measurements. Ms. Graves, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
Yes, I do. I'd like to enter exhibit one, which is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the St. Louis County on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit two is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit three is a memorandum from Planning and Zoning Services Director Jonathan Raish to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit four is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty-five, dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and exhibit five is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Wedler, who would present this issue to the City Council?
That'd be City Planner Two, Amy Lowery.
Good evening again. Just to give you a little bit of background, the initial requirements for floor area ratio were adopted in two thousand and six, two thousand and eight with the goal of further regulating the size of infill housing. From two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two, the city adopted a comprehensive plan and council adopted a strategic plan that references encouraging quality housing options for all. And in two thousand and twenty-three, the city had an attainable housing study completed, and this study included recommendations for how the city could encourage a wider variety of housing stock and also to preserve existing housing stock. One of the recommendations that came out of that study was to loosen the FAR regulations for certain property owners who'd like to add on to their existing houses. I'm just going to go through a little bit of a primer on what floor area ratio is versus what lot coverage is. So lot coverage is defined as the percentage of a lot that is covered by structures, and that only is considered as the footprint of the building, so that would just be basically the ground floor. And the purpose of this is to regulate the bulk of principal and accessory structures. Floor area ratio, on the other hand, is a measure of the total area of the building as a percentage of the lot, and it's done by adding each of the floors and dividing by the total lot area. So if you look at just the center row right here, an FAR of one would allow a one-story building to either cover the whole lot, or it would allow a two-story building to cover half of the lot, or a four-story building to cover one quarter of the lot. These are higher FAR levels than, and they're generally used for commercial buildings. Our current FAR regulations for single-family residences, it's a little bit less, so it's a ratio of either thirty-five percent, thirty percent, or twenty percent, and it goes down as the lot gets larger. But every house in Kirkwood can have a minimum of twenty-two fifty square feet if you can fit that into the required setbacks. So that's what we've decided in Kirkwood, that that's a reasonable number for every house to be. And just an illustration of FAR, it includes a hundred percent of the first and second floor, fifty percent of a garage or a carport. It does not include a half-story area, and it does not include the basement area or any unenclosed porches or decks. So the study looked at how can we let people add on to their existing houses rather than moving to a larger, more expensive home. So it was looking at ways to make it more affordable to stay in a current home. And so the language that is before you tonight is to allow additions to single-family homes if the following criteria are met. The initial occupancy permit was issued a minimum of ten years prior, so that means it's going to be an older home, not one that was built last year. And the proposed addition does not increase the existing lot coverage of the property. I know that that was important because we are looking at avoiding potential additional stormwater issues. So if the lot coverage is already at a certain point and you add on to the second floor, you're not going to increase those stormwater issues. The Planning and Zoning Commission did look at this, and they failed to recommend approval of this proposal. It was a vote of four in favor and three opposed, and we needed an affirmative vote of five members for a positive recommendation, so there were two members that were not there. They did discuss when the revision would allow additions, including if there were partial demolitions. They talked about the original reason for the FAR regulations, to limit the overall size of the house versus allowing people to add on to their existing houses. And the three commissioners that were opposed to this revision were generally in favor of efforts to increase affordable and attainable housing, but they were skeptical that this revision would actually achieve that result. So they were not actually against this. They just didn't think this was the right tool or the right method. For a zoning code text amendment, there are four criteria that need to be considered, and those are up on the screen for you to look at. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Amy. Council, do you have questions? Councilmember Litzo?
Thank you. Amy, so with regard to those criteria, review criteria, that was one of the things cited in the second whereas of the bill stating that the P and Z, or at least, I guess, four of the members felt that this proposed amendment didn't adhere to those, I don't know, all four of them or whatever. Do you know specifically?
I don't know specifically on this, you know, review criteria here. Generally, the review criteria, you should look at them all, but one of them may be more controlling than the other in some circumstances, so the review criteria, you do not have to meet every single one of those in order to make a change.
I was just wondering, like, I mean, number, Roman numeral three doesn't seem like would be anything, but maybe something specifically of the other ones, comprehensive plan or whatever. I don't know. I was just curious about that since they called that out as one of their reasons for not voting in favor. So, I mean, I absolutely support trying to figure out how to thread the needle of attainable housing, and Kirkwood property values and prices have skyrocketed and have only gotten worse. My husband and I have been here for thirty-two years, and I get calls constantly, do you want to sell your house? I'm like, maybe. I'm just wondering if, I have some reservations about this approach because as we allow owners to increase the bulk of their property, add on to the square footage, it will increase the value of their property presumably, and whenever they turn it over, that previously, you know, affordable home will now be who knows how many square foot larger. In two surveys, twenty nineteen, and then more recently when we did the Affordable Housing Study, citizens were asked various questions about housing stock in Kirkwood, how they view, you know, zoning codes, et cetera, et cetera. The twenty nineteen study was, I believe, more carefully crafted than the more recent one for the attainable housing study, but both of them, it seemed clear that citizens prefer smaller homes, not the big bulky two-story, you know, kind of fill up the entire lot thing that we've seen has become popular in recent years. I mean, and this goes back to maybe when we adopted the FAR regulation in, you know, how many years ago? The whole McMansion thing, when lots of smaller homes in Kirkwood were being torn down and turned into thirty-five hundred, four thousand square foot homes. So I, I understand that. I understand having, you know, a smaller home next door to you, suddenly a builder comes in and puts in a large home. It changes the look of your street. It changes the value of your home, comps, all kinds of, you know, repercussion. I'm just wondering, I think this, you know, relaxing FAR might go towards my view of sustainability and preserving existing housing stock that's got good bones, good materials, you know, that's, you know, built how many decades or whatever ago. I'm just wondering if we get rid of FAR, if it's not going to have an unintended consequence of allowing homes to, you know, just sort of fill up that entire bulk size, which we've tried to get away from the big boxes and, and, you know, have different heights and half stories for attics and all that kind of stuff. So it's going to change the streetscape. But I'm just wondering if it might just be more applicable, let's say, to our R-four zoning district where you generally have smaller lots of fifteen thousand square feet or less?
Seventy-five hundred.
That's the minimum?
In R-four.
That's the minimum size. Is that the maximum as well?
No, it can be as large, but, I mean, we have many lots that are below seventy-five hundred as well.
Okay.
I would say in R-four, it's generally seventy-five hundred to ten thousand, probably.
So in that range, but if we said R-four, you know, this could apply to R-four and also maybe a percentage of an addition increase? I don't know, rather than just saying, forget about, you know, as long as you meet the height requirements and the setback requirements, you can, you know, sort of add on as much as you can afford. I'm just wondering if, if that would help kind of rein it in and also maybe take a slower approach to this and try to keep in mind this attainability thing, which has to do with the value of the property. Square footage relates directly to the value of the property when it's resold. So my thinking is that I would, I would like staff to consider like limiting this. When we had the work session, I brought this up with Jonathan about possibly, you know, not allowing it in all the zoning districts. I'm not sure that we need this in the R-one, R-two, maybe even.
I would say probably not on R-one or R-two.
Right. And I don't know about R-four?
Those are going to be your smaller lots, so if you're concerned about bulk, that's.
Yeah, right, right. So if we should also look at, at, or, I'm sorry, did I say R-four? I meant R-three. If, you know, would it be something that is needed in R-three? R-four, I think that is something to definitely consider, that we could try and limit unintended consequences of just saying, forget, you know, the FAR altogether. I mean, we already allow half of attached garages, which those garages are pretty good size, and I, you know, half the time, they're used for storage anyway, or maybe they're a man cave. I don't know what, but, you know, there's like a bonus already there. So, you know, we have to understand exactly what's going on. So I would just, I would, I would feel better supporting this if we kind of reined it in to where it would have the most positive benefit and not create unintended consequences of just sort of inflating the bulk of a lot of homes in Kirkwood, because this is, you know, I mean, it's a popular place to live. A lot of, you know, a lot of people would be more than happy to be able to try and come and live in Kirkwood and take advantage of this community. So those are, I think, my main, my main things is just, you know, throwing that out there, that I do have reservations about this. I'd like to be happy with it, so that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmer?
Thank you, Amy. So I think studying this and listening to the arguments, planning and zoning, and reading about this, I think there are, I think this is a good approach. I think Councilmember Litzo's concern of, well, if you add on to an existing home, it's going to increase its value. And that may, that may very well be true. If you tear it down and build a brand-new home, the value's probably going to be more on that than would be the existing home with an addition. I say that because I've seen it in my own neighborhood over the past ten years. There's hundreds of examples where affordable, attainable housing is gone, was replaced, it is something that's much more expensive. You can look online right now and look at the prices of homes that are ten years or younger. They're not building smaller homes. They're building larger, more expensive homes. We have talked about attainable housing in Kirkwood for over a decade. Year after year, we talk about it, and to me, this is an opportunity to maybe make a little dent in doing something about it to where we have an option. There are plenty of houses that can't be saved, that will be demolished. They're going to build something larger on it. I have a house, two houses from mine. They put up a fence. It's about to be demolished. It's going to have a bigger house on it. That's going to happen, but if we can preserve some of these by loosening these regulations, giving people an option that will make, and move the needle a little bit for our attainable housing that we want, I think this is a good solution. It's not perfect. Like you mentioned, R-one and R-two, that may not be necessary, and I'm flexible with that. But I think the approach, if we have talked about attainable housing for so long, this is something we can actually do to make it happen. Not everybody in Kirkwood is going to build a second story on their home. It's just, we can go ten years in the future, and It's just, we can go ten years in the future, and you might have maybe five percent of our houses in Kirkwood that might take advantage of this. So, and this is reality. This is what I've seen the last ten years, being in Kirkwood, in my own neighborhood, on my own street. I've seen it with my own eyes. I've seen what gets torn down, I see what gets built up, and everybody in Kirkwood sees it. So, I think this is reasonable. My question for our city employees is, do you have any concerns about what might be ramifications based on our experience over the past ten to fifteen years? Do we need to do this differently, or is this what you think is the right approach?
Well, I will say that, you know, working with the Board of Adjustment, we do get a lot of cases where somebody just wants to add one bedroom, they just need a little bit more room in their house. And sometimes that's FAR, and the Board has consistently said, "No, the rules are the rules, we're not going to bend those." Sometimes it's setbacks. I might have some concern about the FAR. This is going to lead to one, maybe, if builders key into this, lead to ranch houses having the tops, the pop, pop the top on them. I don't know. I don't know, you know, I can't predict what is going to happen. I think it will help some people in some cases that want to add on to their houses and for whatever reason, maybe approach of a percentage, if the concern is too much bulk, I don't, I don't know. If that's, you know, giving you heartache that you don't want, maybe you limit to a percentage.
I think this is, I think that it's good to discuss this and try and come up with some solution, because it's not going to be everybody in Kirkwood's going to be downstairs wanting to add a second story. It's not for everyone, right? It's going to be for a small group of citizens and residents. So, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Additional comments, questions? I just have, could you explain the ten-year delay?
Ten-year delay in...
That you can't, it has to be ten years...
Because it's, you know, to stop a builder from building a house, and then all along they had a plan that they're going to come back and enclose a rear porch to get more room. So, the buyer, you know, wanted maybe in a sunroom on the back, and they didn't have enough left in the FAR for that, because we don't include an enclosed porch. And so, you know, a year later, they come in. So, I guess it was more to reward long-term citizens and the people who really needed some, maybe some relief, because they can maybe afford to do a project on their house so that when they have that third kid, they have room, instead of having to sell and then buy something that they can't afford in Kirkwood.
Questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move to public comments on this subject. Have we have any cards filled out?
Mayor and Council, we have one comment from Tom Finer.
As you know, I'm Tom Finer, and I'm appearing tonight to express my support for the proposed modifications.
Can you move the microphone just a bit closer to you? There you go.
My comments echo things articulated from the, from Council tonight. In my experience, people, younger families, don't sell their house in Kirkwood because they want to. They sell it because family circumstances require it. It seems to me that anything we can do to permit young families to modify their homes so that they can remain in Kirkwood without selling the house, which will inevitably be, a smaller house will inevitably be torn down and replaced with a larger one, I think we need to encourage that. When I first looked at this, and when we considered this at P&amp;Z, I thought the limitations that staff had recommended were pretty well-crafted and really were a good mechanism to permit potential abuse. In hearing some of the comments tonight, I think that also can be improved. I think you might want to think about limiting it to the smaller, to R3, R4. You might want to think about imposing a top limit on the percentage of floor here that can be added. But the long and the short of it is, anything that this Council can do to permit people to stay in their homes without having to go into the market, given the challenges in the market today with house prices, with interest rates, younger families will not be relocating in Kirkwood if they're looking for more space. They'll be leaving, and as Councilman Zimmer remarked, inevitably, that home when it goes on the market will be purchased, demolished, and replaced with a larger home. As near as I can determine, the attitude of the commissioners who were not inclined to approve this, you know, it seemed to be that this was not going to solve the affordable housing problem. I absolutely agree. This is not a magic bullet, but it's a start, and it may work to keep a hundred people in Kirkwood or a thousand over time. It won't solve the overall problem, but I don't know why you wouldn't consider this. Thanks.
Thank you.
There are no further comments.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from Council? Okay, very good. Hearing no further discussion, this Council, the public hearing is now closed. The bill will be on the June 18th Council meeting agenda for first reading consideration. Now, we will move into public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk if action is needed.
Thank you. Do we have any cards tonight?
Mayor and Council, we have one comment card from Mike Fitzgerald.
Evening. My name is Mike Fitzgerald, and I live at 729 Cleveland Avenue. I last appeared before you back in March. I had requested that you pass a resolution of support for federal workers who lost their jobs through the mass firing campaign perpetrated by Donald Trump and Elon Musk. The more, two months that have since passed, Trump, in an attempt to consolidate power, has accelerated his attacks on the federal workforce by shutting down entire agencies and erasing collective bargaining rights, embracing violation of law. So far, nearly three hundred thousand federal workers have been forced out of their jobs since Trump returned to office, or more than 10% of the entire federal workforce. Most of these jobs are in the IRS, the FAA, US AID, and other agencies that regulate and investigate Musk businesses. St. Louis County alone, there are more than twenty-five thousand federal workers. What's more, Trump has taken a sledgehammer to America's vital scientific infrastructure. He's terminated unlawfully thousands of grants awarded to the National Institutes of Health, the National Science Foundation, and other agencies, and he's attempting to slam the doors shut on the best and brightest science students from around the world, whose contributions to America's world standing include the creation of countless new businesses, a myriad of important inventions, and dozens and dozens of Nobel prizes. Which brings me to the reason I am standing before you tonight. I am once again asking that the Kirkwood City Council pass a resolution of support for federal workers and scientists harmed by the Trump regime's campaign of mass firings and mass research grant terminations. The resolution I'm asking to adopt is similar to the one that the St. Louis County Council adopted in early March. As for myself, I'm nobody special, but I am a military veteran, a veteran. And when I heard that Trump and Musk, both of whose corruption is unprecedented in scale and scope, plan to cut eighty-three thousand jobs from the Veterans Administration, including workers who staffed the VA Suicide Prevention Hotline, while Trump planned to spend nearly one hundred million dollars of our tax money to celebrate his birthday later this month, that little voice in the back of my head, that voice we call our conscience, it went off like an alarm. "This is wrong," the little voice said. "No," it said. "No, no, no."
Mr. Fitzgerald, we need to wrap this up, please.
Sure. So, the point I'm trying to make is that it would be great if these cruel and reckless cuts personnel for good reasons, for noble reasons, but they're not. They're just to basically gut the agencies that regulate Musk businesses and to provide tax cuts for billionaires.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
In conclusion, the federal workers and scientists have always been there for them.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll certainly be there for them. Thank you. Oh, ma'am, I've timed this. This is less than three, I still have about fifteen more seconds to go. I have three minutes. This is a quarter of a clock. What does the clock say?
Well, the...
I've been timing this. I did not use up my three minutes on, and you cut me off early.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I don't have a clock here.
But I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, but please take my entreaty seriously. These federal workers need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get a clock. We will now move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the consent agenda passes. We'll now move into unfinished business. The Bill 11078.
Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance granting an amendment to the special use permit for outdoor dining at 436 North Kirkwood Road, Napoli, Kirkwood, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11078?
Do you have a question?
Okay, go ahead, Ms.
When this first, when their outdoor dining was first approved, was there any requirement for the fencing?
For the outdoor dining, no.
This, when they came to put the temporary, request the bar...
For the bar.
Then it was added at that point?
It was added by the Planning and Zoning Commission, yes.
And what drove that?
They were talking about the dividing line between the public plaza and what was the private dining area, and how some of the tables had been moved beyond that line, and then just talking about, you know, introducing a bar there and wanting to contain that.
But they could serve drinks out there prior to the bar being...
Yes, yes.
Initially, that was not as big of a concern, apparently.
That is correct.
Okay. Yes. We need a motion and a second to suspend Robert's rule of order if somebody is here from Napoli that would like to speak.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so the motion has been made to suspend Robert's rule of order, and we need to vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and talk with us?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I'm a little nervous. I don't normally get this rattled. I hope not. My name's Tom Brocklemeyer, working, Tom Brocklemeyer, working Napoli. I guess I was sent here to talk about this fence. It's something we don't, we don't really want and don't think that we really need. Or one thing is, where our quote for it was eighteen thousand dollars, and, you know, as a business, that's only been open about six months, that's a huge expense after having to open a place that was shell. Second off, uh, so nervous. Our guests and our clientele that come in aren't the rowdy, obnoxious folk, okay? So, I'm not too concerned about, we're not too concerned about there being a huge problem with it drifting out into what's supposed to be the public area. Everyone's already contained in there. Our hostesses and everything, they take them, and they are, they are taken there and they are seated. People don't just come and go, you know, they will have to come to us first. You know, we maintain the flow of the restaurant. And I don't know what else I have written down here. Are there any other concerns or questions that you guys might have that I could try to help you with?
I think, well, yeah. So, Mr. Brocklemeyer, I had heard that during the P and, the Planning and Zoning Commission review of the project, that, was it the manager of Napoli and another representative were okay, they were on board with the added condition of installing a three-foot-high fence around the area?
So, yeah, that was Charlie, Mr. Bonger. I think part of that was that they were okay with this because we wanted to try and get the bar approved, and then after everything, you know, trying to, I hate to put this spot. We're trying to, you know, we don't think that it's necessary at this point anymore, you know? At first, it was an idea, and they were, yeah, we were okay with the idea. Now, after it's getting all blueprinted out and the price for it and everything, it's something that we're looking to not continue it if we can have it amended back to being open.
It's primarily because of the cost?
That's a big one.
I mean, I don't know who, it seems like an inflated amount for just putting in a three-foot-high railing, so I'm not sure what the deal is with that. I mean, I sort of, I would be leery too about, I mean, I, that seems like an exorbitant amount of money, so I'm not, I'm not sure what's up with that. I mean, from my point of view, because it's the focus of that outdoor space now is being converted from, like, mostly food service to, you know, a bar, and maybe an outdoor waiting space, or just people having cocktails, who knows? You know, and good for you guys, I hope you're doing well. I've heard things are, you know, it's a great place to, I haven't been over there to be a patron yet, but I'm hoping that you're successful in Kirkwood. But from my point of view, and Planning and Zoning's point of view, is sort of protecting your business, but also I have heard that staff had had to come over and remind you sort of where that invisible line of demarcation is. We have, you know, a signed agreement with the James and all of that, and it's sort of the city's duty and responsibility to protect that space for public use. So, you know, and we would like it to be a space that's popular for everyone, but it's, you know, from my, from my perspective, it's important that you guys know where, you know, we don't want to have to be sending the, you know...
Sure, and since, and since we have tightened it up and got it back into our proper parameters, and, you know, the concern about it being a, being a more bar and cocktail thing, once again, our guests and clientele, we are, we're a fine dining establishment. We're not your typical, you know, we're not Billy G's or something.
Rowdy saloon.
Right. The people, the people that come in, they come in to dine, and we, and our bar does full service, everything. You know, we, we don't do shots, and there's not, we don't carry like rumple mints and Fireball and things like that, you know? We're not serving that kind of stuff.
Oh, Fireball, okay.
No, that's not, that's not our, that's not our intention. So, we're a wine Manhattan.
Yes.
Let's have a steak and...
A classy operation, yeah.
Correct. You know, so, that, that's, that's the concern too. And once again, we, we run, we, people don't just sit down, we escort them over there and we sit them, and it would be the same for bar seats, just like it was a table. They would have to come to us first.
And originally, you had, part of your petition was to have live entertainment, and that was invited, yeah, but that really is not advisable.
I think, from my understanding.
I would think a host of reasons.
Yeah, yeah, now we just have a little speaker and just...
Recorded, right, you can control the level and...
Correct.
Yeah, plus cheaper and doesn't take up space where you could have patrons.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we just have a little speaker that plays jazz or whatever. E. Martin.
Yeah, well, I'm still very skeptical about this, eighteen thousand dollars for a railing to put around, you know, that seems like sort of exorbitant, but...
Nothing's cheap these days.
Yeah, I do, you know, I tend to support what the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, their decisions, since they... Um, since they look at these things all the time, they deal with this kind of stuff all the time. Um, so, I mean, I'm willing to possibly bend on this, depending on what other people think at this dais. Um, but it, believe me, it's important. There's a signed easement. It's public space. And it needs to be, um, you know, on your part, the management, staff, whatever, need to keep that in mind.
Sure.
So.
Absolutely, and we do our best as of right now, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Working, learning, so.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it, anything.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. So, for me, eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of money. Always has been, but if it's a safety issue, I, I, that's just part of it. So it's not a safety issue. I understand that this is to draw and align. Well, but that's public space, so it's open to the public. So if somebody grabs a drink and they go sit down in the public space, that's what it's there for. It's for public space. You're not sending a waitress over to serve them cocktails over there. That's not the intent. The intent is that it's there for public space. Well, it's there, if I want to go up with my wife and sit down and have a glass of wine and sit over there and wait until you guys call us up for, for dinner, that's what I consider a public space. You can sit there and do that. So I would tell you, uh, if you're okay with not worrying about that somebody's going to walk off for not paying and all that, whichever herd that you're not concerned.
We have no concern with that.
Right, because you guys run, you watch what's going on and so is your waitstaff.
Right.
So I would tell you, I would be opposed to this, uh, requirement of having a fence put up because it has, it's not about a safety issue in my mind. So that's where I'm at.
I, I would agree. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
Go ahead.
I just think that if they don't want to put a fence up, they shouldn't have to put a fence up. I mean, I agree with Paul. It's, if they're not worried about people walking off, I'm not going to be worried about it. They're probably going to put eighteen thousand dollars in because it'd be a nice fence.
Well, sure.
That's, that's probably why it's going to cost that.
Sure. It's, it, right, you're, and then the next restaurant that moves in there, not that you're moving anywhere, anywhere soon.
Hope not, it's my job.
Right, so, you know.
Okay. Would you like to offer a motion?
I would. An amendment? A motion for an amendment to remove the fence requirement.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any comments or questions on the amendment?
Mayor, I have a question actually about this. Are, does staff know if, are there any legal issues with people getting alcoholic drinks and just wandering around outside of the bounds of the restaurant space? Is that a question? A reason, another reason why it would maybe need to be, rather than buying a drink at the bar and then go off into the public space?
Right, the, the public space.
Is, is that like a concern?
Well, I, I think that you could do that in a lot of places now. It's, it's sort of a, probably an enforcement issue, uh, rather than a, rather than a, determine if fences required or not. There's sort of different questions.
People should stay within the bounds of the restaurant if they are being a patron of the restaurant?
So, the, your, your question is really like in the, in the city of Kirkwood, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head is, can you have a, an alcoholic beverage on the sidewalk, for example?
Right.
And if you can, then in this public space, it would not be an issue.
Right, but just wondering if there's a rule that you can't go walking around with a beer in your hand. I mean, with COVID, we sort of loosened regulations on consumption of alcohol and drive-through. And I don't think that stuff has been, you know, reined back in. So I'm just wondering, you know, if, if there's any kind of actual.
We will have open carry this weekend with carbs and guitars because people will be getting a beer.
Right, absolutely, and there will be beer trucks that have permits and whatever, special, special.
I mean, yeah, it's going across here. I know, and I mean, like, let me, you know, for example, when Bar Louie was open, they had that garage door. And that, that's supposed to be public land as well, right? What's to stop any of them that from bordering, you know, when Bar Louie was open right across the street, they had that garage door and it would make it like a big open area. What was to stop any of them from going and grabbing a beer, paying for it and walking out to that what's considered public land? You know, I mean, so it's the same kind of idea. Ours is much smaller.
Right.
I mean, they got live music and beer and coolers. It looks like a good time.
Yeah, and you're stuck here talking up.
Yeah.
Um, they also had a fence around their outdoor tables.
Did they?
Yes.
So, so they had a, doesn't it?
Amendment still?
Yeah, we're still talking about the amendment. Any other questions or comments? That's what I was.
Um. I, I think, you know, because this is a public area, it's, it's maybe a little bit different. I do have some concerns about not having a fence there to delineate between the private restaurant and the public area. However, there's another restaurant in Kirkwood that abuts to city-owned property next to the train tracks and there is no fence. So, you know, that to me, now there's a fence at the train tracks.
Sure.
But there's no fence between their patio and the city-owned property and the green space. That being said, I'm, I'm open to the amendment. I think the, the only thing that I would suggest is maybe, you know, maybe having, uh, not necessarily the whole area fenced in, but just maybe parts of it fenced in, so you've got an idea of where the boundary actually is. Something to think about because it is a public plaza. If it wasn't this public plaza that you and I have talked about many times, it, I, I would say you don't need a fence at all, but because there's that public plaza there, I just have that concern. But I am open to the amendment. Uh, I just, I would encourage you a, as a business to think about just having maybe pieces of railing or something that would reduce your expense, but show where the line actually is in case there is an issue that we can't foresee in the future.
I, I will try to wrap up. Again, th- this is the second reading of an ordinance, so whatever we pass tonight goes into play one way or the other. Um, and again, I, you know, it, this has been a good conversation, but I, since it wasn't originally required, you know, just adding a bar out there, I'm not quite sure why that made a big difference to add it in. I am fine with the amendment. I think we need to just, um, move on it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so do we take a roll call on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The amendment carries. Um, any discussion on the bill?
Thank you.
Bill as amended.
As amended, sorry. Bill is amended? No, okay, and is, is that roll call?
Yes, this will be a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
The bill carries. Um, new business, Bill one one zero seven six A.
Second to bring the substitute.
Have a motion and a second to bring the substitute bill to the floor.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you.
All in favor.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, it passes. Um, do I have a motion and a second to accept substitute bill? One one zero seven six A for first reading approval?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Ms.
So just first of all, thanks to the council for continuing this, um, over the last couple of meetings so that it gave Jonathan and I a chance to sit down and, and kind of work through some questions I had. This all started, um, back in twenty twenty-three with the prior council and just moved to this council for some tweaking. Um, nothing happened at that point. Came to this council a few weeks ago, so, or, you know, maybe a month or two. And so it was really our first chance to take a look at it. Um, Jonathan was very helpful. There were some additional things that led to, um, I think Nancy had made some amendments and then there's some additional things that Jonathan brought forward. Um, you know, it's, it's a, we're trying to clean up some things after about a twenty twenty-one revision of the, um, ordinances. And so there's some things we really need to, to put in place now, a little bit, bring some clarity. But the big thing is to begin to move landmarks out of, um, having to go through a double review. So I like the clarity of that, begin to make it a little easier for somebody who might be in a landmark district or piece of property, not have to do ARB and um, review. There are things that I think still can be tweaked, but I, I like that we fix this now. You know, live with it a while and if there are other things we need to make, um, changes or consider, we give this a little bit of time instead of trying to blow the whole thing up and start from scratch. Although I'm sure Jonathan and Amy would love that opportunity. So anyway, um, I, I, I like the movement now. I, you know, again, I think there's other things we can do, but, um, I do appreciate the work. Again, you all, um, willing to give it a little time to work through and then Jonathan's, um.
Thank you for your work on it. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Amy, as far as landmarks commission, they, they only look at, um, like, they don't, they don't review additions in local historic districts. Is that true?
Unless the particular property is a designated landmark.
Right.
Then they will look at an addition to a designated landmark.
I mean, individual landmarks.
Correct.
Um, but like homes in Craig Woods, if somebody wants.
There are no landmarks in Craig Woods, so if you put up an addition in Craig Woods, only ARB would look at it.
So ARB is still involved in his, in reviewing.
However, if you put up a new detached structure in Craig Woods, uh, oversized shed, a new detached garage, then according to these changes, you would only go to landmarks.
Okay, okay. Um, well, it would be nice at some point, as Gina alluded to, that, you know, to try and have everything related to historic districts and histor- and landmarks, individual landmarks under uh, landmarks, uh, purview, but I'm, I appreciate the work that you've done and I'm sure ARB will be happy making, having some of these things taken off their plate since they don't really have much they can say about solar panels and, and other things. And things can, you know, just have staff review and, and certainly not to have duplicative reviews with landmarks and ARB doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I appreciate the, the changes. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, um, all, then we'll go ahead and do, all in favor, first reading approval of Bill one one zero seven six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Um, the bill carries. Um, resolution five one twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of SCI Engineering. Have the rates provided in the rate sheet, a copy of which is attached here too and incorporated by reference herein for on-call construction materials testing and inspection services for the engineering department for an initial term of twelve months, with the option to renew for up to four additional twelve-month terms contingent upon budgetary approval and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to accept resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-five as read?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Uh, sorry. Discussion, questions. Oh, got one.
Chris, you got a second? Sorry to pull you up on the. So.
That's why I'm here.
I know. Uh, just one bid. There's nobody else out there that, that does this type of work in St. Louis area?
Oh, no, there's, there's many other, um, but this was selected under RFQ process, which was a request for qualifications.
Okay.
And so, uh, they were selected as the most qualified firm to provide these services.
Perfect.
But there were three.
Right, so, yeah, so we looked at three other firms, uh, for qualifications and we selected them as the most qualified.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, give me an example of how you use these guys.
Uh, if we're pouring a concrete street, uh, they would do concrete tests. Uh, so they'll pull cylinders and, uh, measure the, the slump of the concrete, the temperature of the concrete, and then, uh, basically give me strength numbers, um, so I can tell when traffic goes back on the, on the street. And then we have durable streets i- in the end.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns? Oh, okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
The ru- resolution has passed. Resolution fifty-two twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an OMCI Stormwater Reimbursement Program Agreement with the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for reimbursement of stormwater construction costs in the amount of not to exceed one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars for the STP fifty-five oh two six ten, the West Essex Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept resolution fifty-two twenty twenty-five as read?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I, I have one and I don't know if David's going to be able to answer it or not, but, so this is coming through the OMCI funds. Do we budget these? I mean, is that, or how are those drawn down? Because of this account number that it's coming out is, is we budgeted the exact amount, but I know those funds are out of a tax that comes in and we've got this pool of money sitting somewhere our office. And it.
You were file cabinet.
And file cabinet, then, oh, good, oh, Chris is going to risk.
I'll address that because we actually don't have these funds sitting in our account. They're actually in MSD and so we have to cr- request these funds from MSD. And this, this is a secret.
Okay, is it in our budget in real life or is this added to the budget?
This is added to the budget.
If I go to this account number, we're not going to really have anything in it, but you're going to put money in it.
Um, so, correct. Um, it'll be, it'll just offset our costs for, uh, the West Essex project.
So anytime you're pulling funds from the various stormwater funds that the county has.
At MSD, yeah.
MSD has, you, that gets added in to offset out of the budget.
Yes, so it would, it would just offset any costs that we have for projects.
Okay.
You draw the funds after you're finished or?
Uh, we will pay the contractor and then we will submit a reimbursement request to MSD and then they'll get, cut us a check.
And MSD's already approved it.
MSD's already approved, correct. They just need our approval. Yep.
Thanks.
Chris, um, can you say exactly like what, what is the scope of this? What kind of, um, stormwater?
So this will go and pay for stormwater infrastructure, meaning, um, pipe and stormwater inlets that are going in with the W- West Essex project.
Mm-hmm, and it, these are like elevated requirements or higher than, than normal? Or this is just sort of part of that?
These are, these are, uh, just standard, uh, inlets. They're not anything above what MSD requires for a project. Um, and so those capture more, um, stormwater, uh, that are sized appropriately for, for the system.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution fifty-three twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing the city of Kirkwood to provide insurance coverage in an annual cost of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, effective June first, twenty twenty-five through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept resolution fifty-three twenty twenty-five as read?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments?
David Shirley can answer. So we budgeted it right at a million and this is seven seventy-five. So is there anything else in it or we? So is there anything else in it, or are we saving a quarter of a million dollars?
So there are additional funds there, um, or additional insurances besides these, such as, uh, uh, minor bonds and a few different other things that'll come out of that amount. Um, this is underneath the projected, um, but it's not underneath the projected by, you know, the tune of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, three-hundred-thousand dollars. It's probably closer to fifty to a hundred thousand dollars less than projected increases, so it's, it's good.
That's based on claims data, and that's, and it's a little delay from budget time to.
Yes, yeah.
To get the actual.
When we were going through with budget time, that would have been, um, almost nine months ago, when we were formulating those figures, we had better figures at the end of October, but it's looking at October numbers to now, when you're looking at, uh, projecting factors from then for workers' compensation through the spring, and also whatever liability happened uh, between then and now. So, um, we did pretty well, especially including some of the spring storms we've had, and some, we've made some claims as well. So I was actually anticipating a little bit higher on the property side, but our brokerage firm was pretty good with, um, maintaining the rates that the increase, the modest increase that we've had, so overall, we've done pretty well. Um, looking at it overall, about six-point-eight percent increase over last year, and we were anticipating a substantial increase, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we now move to city council reports. Yes, Councilmember Jaxettek.
Yeah, like, I've talked a lot. Um, I just want to say, um, give a little update on the Urban Forestry Commission. You know, it's been a great year, they, um, they have elected their new officers. Um, so Shane Stanton Stanton is the new chair, Tanner will stay as vice chair, and Joanne Osborne will be the secretary, and Mike Henkins is rolling off, and he has done a great job. Um, I, I can't say enough about the work of this group, from early on, um, David and Lori and I met with Mike to help kind of get them on a, a solid foot, uh, or a little, little bit better foundation, and with Brandon joining, um, I tell you, this group, wait for some work to come to this council next year. Um, I do have to say, Shane took some initiative, as we really worked with trying to develop a orientation and, and give them resources and tools, and again, it was a collaborative effort, but he just sent the draft to everybody before this last meeting, and there is a hundred-and-thirty-three-page urban forestry manual. So I'm telling you, we went from nothing to this in a year is pretty remarkable. Now, some of that, twenty-five pages were, you know, the master plan, but there is great content. Um, it's going to be a great tool as new urban forestry members come on. Um, and again, kudos to the whole group, and, um, I'd look for great things to come in the next year or two, and increase in our canopy.
Very good, thank you. Good.
Yes, and.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Sure, I'll mention, uh, this weekend is going to be an exciting one in Kirkwood. We have our Cars and Guitars Festival on Saturday, weather permitting, hopefully the rains will, uh, hold off, and then in the morning is Carbs and Guitars at our main firehouse at eight-thirty.
Very good, thank you. Schaefer?
Hey, I, this is about library, just some info- general information, uh, from the library board meeting. Uh, they're working on, there was a citizen that asked about, uh, why we don't have a flag out in front of the, uh, library. They're working on that, they're determining whether they're going to attach it to the building, or whether they're going to put it on the roof. I'm not exactly sure, but that's their decisions. Um, there was another couple of citizens that have asked about the lights, why they're on outside around and front. Uh, they've told me that they're working on getting that on a timer. Uh, they were awarded a twenty-one-thousand-dollar grant for technology, which I thought was great, just keep going out there. And then, off of the library, onto just a second, if I could, I'd like to thank our first responders and our staff that went for mutual aid for the tornado in the city of St. Louis. I'm sure they would turn around and do the same for us, but I'm very proud of us sending our first responders down there in a mutual aid setting to help out with the city.
Lizzo? Thank you, um, well, I wanted to thank all of the citizens who came out to the, um, parks, park board master plan, uh, planning open house, um, last Wednesday. It, it, I was only here for about half an hour or forty-five minutes, because I had other stuff going on, but it looked like it was a pretty good turnout of people, um, posting comments to the various proposed plans for all of our parklands, which, um, we certainly appreciate citizen input, um, on, in that master planning process. And also, um, citizens will notice that we passed a resolution tonight, appointing, reappointing lots of boards and commission members, and also appointing brand-new boards and commission members, and we still have some vacancies that's, uh, need to be filled. Um, I would recommend, uh, anyone who has, um, any, uh, interesting professional background or, or amateur background to check out our various boards and commissions. Um, it's a rewarding experience to, uh, serve on a, uh, the boards and commissions. We have a whole variety from active boards and commissions like Urban Forestry, Kirkwood Arts Commissions, to Planning and Zoning, um, Board of Adjustment. Um, we certainly appreciate our citizen volunteers, and frankly, we couldn't do this unless we had citizens involved and invested in, um, the government of this community, our own government, we are the government. So, um, I urge you to consider, uh, if not, um, considering applying, uh, filling out a profile for this year, think, think about it for next year, we're going to try and make it easier for people to understand what the missions of all the boards and commissions are, make it easier to see where the vacancies are, um, what kinds of activities. Um, but we certainly appreciate everyone who has served, and all of the new people who are being, uh, appointed tonight, or those who are being reappointed. That's all.
Thank you. I, I wanted to mention a couple of things, I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Sunny Combs, our former president of our Chamber of Commerce for many years. Um, she was a Kirkwood resident since nineteen-eighty, so, um, yeah, it was very, um, sad to learn about her passing, so. Um, this Saturday is also the Meacham Park Parade at eleven AM, there's a lot going on on Saturday. And the last thing I want to mention is if anybody wants a good belly laugh, you've got to go see the stages production of Murder for Two, and I mean belly laugh, throughout the whole thing, very fun. Okay, um, chief administrative officer report?
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney report?
I likewise have nothing to report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City clerk report?
Yes, Your Honor, a couple things to report on, first, the report of the May twenty-first, two-zero-twenty-five meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken by a vote of eight to zero, the commission recommended approval of a zoning co-text amendment of section twenty-five dash thirty-six U-four on marijuana dispensary facility hours of operation. A public hearing will be scheduled for that on the text amendment for June eighteenth, and by a vote of eight to zero, the commission recommended approval of an amendment to the hours of operation in the special use permit um, for a marijuana dispensary for proper cannabis at one-zero-eight-five-five Manchester Road. A public hearing is also scheduled for that on June eighteenth, and that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned, the next regular scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, June eighteenth, Wednesday.
Yes. Wednesday.